Welcome to the regularly scheduled Cupertino City Council meeting. And if you would please join us to pledge allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you very much. And our first set of items is ceremonial matters and presentations. We have on item one, the subject is to consider a certificate of appreciation to Captain Richard Urina for his years of service to the Cupertino community as West Valley Patrol Captain. And so we have a certificate of appreciation for the captain. Captain, if you would please come up and bring any of your cohort that you would like to bring with you for this ceremony. And if my colleagues and city manager can join me on the dais as well. Captain Urina, thank you very much for all your excellent years of service. We're deeply appreciative for all that you've brought to the Cupertino community. And prior to presenting this certificate of appreciation, would you like to say a few words to the public?
Thank you, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, members of the council. Certainly, this wasn't necessary, but I do appreciate the acknowledgement. You know, for the last six years and three months, I've had the pleasure of working with the residents of the city of Cupertino, as well as city staff, and obviously, the council. And just like anything else, things must come to an end. And so I am moving on. I will miss this community. However, however, in my next assignment, we'll be able to support this community. I am moving on to the Investigations Division, and in that division, I get to make sure that things are done right on the back end. And so while I'll continue to support this community, I thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to be here with all of you in this awesome community. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Captain Urina, thank you. And as is the tradition of West Valley, you are always providing the cities of the West Valley an excellent captain. And we're very much looking forward to Neil Valenzuela as our next captain. And so thank you very much for all that you do. And I know that you'll be in touch as the captain of detectives. And so thank you very much for all that you do, once again. So here's our certificate, and I'll open it up, and let's take a quick shot. Today, prior to the holiday season really kicking off in earnest, we wanted to be able to express our appreciation to not just the public safety arm of the employees of the city of Cupertino, but also to the employees themselves. And so item number two, under ceremonial matters and presentations, is a couple of certificates of appreciation for two of our employees that have been working for a very long time for Cupertino. Those are Rudy Lomis and Kane Wolf. And so Rudy and Kane, if you would like to join us, please, again, on the dais. And we have certificates of appreciation for you as well, Rudy and Kane. But before we present those, would you like to say a few words reflecting upon your collective, I think something like six decades of experience in Cupertino?
Just want to say thank you, everybody. It's been great serving the city of Cupertino. Hopefully, I'll enjoy my next chapter.
Twenty-eight years, been a long time. It's, I came here when I was 32 years old from construction, what was left of my body, and got a city job. And it's been a wonderful experience working with all you people. And as Rudy alluded to, it's time to move on and take care of family and enjoy the next chapter of our lives. Thank you very much. Thanks for, everybody for coming.
Thanks so much. And we'll present these now. And at this time, our city manager would like to invite the Public Works staff to come up and take a picture with their retiring colleagues Rudy and Kane. When I come back in 12 years, we'll do that for you, but only after I've served another eight, so. All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone. And I will go ahead and ask that, at this point, we have a 15-minute recess. And the reason we're having a recess at this time is that we're still observing some social distancing protocols. And so a couple of my colleagues will be taking this meeting remotely for the remainder of the agenda. And so right now, we are at 6:53. We will reconvene at 7:10. So we'll see you then. Back, everyone. We are on item number three. That falls under the category of reports by council and staff. These are brief reports, but before we do that, we'll go ahead and take oral communications and postponements of the day. And so backing up two steps, sorry, I'm plodding a little bit too much at the hoof to get through this, but postponements and orders of the day is the next section on our agenda. Does anybody have a requested postponement or reordering of the agenda at this time? Councilmember Moore?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to postpone item 11 to December 20th. And I would like to set up a time to talk to Public Works and work that offline.
Okay, so that's item 11, consideration of the Mitigation Fee Act. Let me ask if there is anybody else who would like to request a postponement or different ordering of the day for the agenda. I see only Councilmember Moore's hand is raised. All right, Councilmember Moore, would you like to put that into the form of a motion, then, for your request?
I move to postpone item 11 to December 20th.
Is there a second for Councilmember Moore's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Willie seconds. And I don't see any hands raised for discussion on this. And so Councilmember Way, let me just check in with the city attorney. Is this a motion that we can deliberate upon, Mr. City Attorney?
So I had to check. The motion to postpone is debatable?
Is debatable. Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Councilmember Way, your hand is raised.
Yes, I'd just like to hear Councilmember Moore's in more detail why is this postponed? I mean, are there questions that haven't been asked before, you know, when we were reviewing the agenda? Or are there further information she is requesting?
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Way. And we'll bring this back over to Councilmember Moore.
Yes, there's further information that I think in the form of a memo to council, I think, would be beneficial.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. And thank you for the question, Councilmember Way. I don't see further hands raised. Madam City Clerk, could you please take a roll call vote on this motion?
Mayor, there are two hands raised on Zoom. I don't know if they're for oral communications, however. I don't know if you would like to take public comment for this.
I am going to go ahead and refer to our city attorney on this because of the fact that we normally take public comment prior to a motion being made. And so I will go ahead and ask Chris whether it makes sense to check in with our members of the public with a hand raised as to whether their comment is regarding this item.
So because this is being postponed, there's no need to take public comment on this item at this time, assuming council approves the motion, of course.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And we are on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for items that are not on the agenda, but can be heard by city council at a future meeting. And so we will go to our members of the public with hands raised in Zoom. And then we will go to our blue cards. And then we will go to any emails that come into cityclerk@cupertino.org during the time that the first person is speaking, or three minutes, whichever is longer. So I have on Zoom, call-in user one, followed by Dennis Cunningham, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by San R. And Madam City Clerk, do you have any blue cards for oral communications? Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And I know that we have a group of students today. And they are Felix, Stephanie, Annie, Aspen, and Bruno, and they would like to provide a presentation. So we'll go to them after that. Jennifer Griffin, John Keigho, Connie Cunningham, Rhonda Frye, and Lisa Warren will comprise our current communications under oral communications. And to remind all the members of the public, you'll have up to three minutes. You'll see that on the screen available. And so we will go ahead and allow call-in user one on Zoom to talk. Welcome. Oh, Madam City Clerk, do you have a preference? Would you like to run the communications? Or would you like me to do that for this?
I have no preference, Mayor.
No preference? Well, I guess since we've already gone down this direction, let's just go ahead and finish. Okay, so call-in user one, welcome. You'll have three minutes. And call-in user one on Zoom, please unmute your microphone.
Okay. You're councilmembers, I guess?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Yeah, okay, thank you. This is from the Huang family. And I have a suggestion. First is about what the city is observing for the residents. For the major decisions, department, whoever make decision to take away the property and belongings, and should have more residents from the city in the holder position there. And another thing is about the fee. And I don't know when the code would change. But normally, for the parties, they usually have a position for this situation because the belonging property we're taking without notice in a try. So it's already so much financial burden. Actually, we did have using attorney as well, but it's not can be consistent because financial situation, starting by this matter, and normally, bear own costs. And because the retaliation, oppress, and extortion, and even impose more, that's another color of the law, not give the due process to citizens. Another thing is about the outside council. And I know city councils tried to hire more people in the legal department, but somehow, the outside still have rearing. And for people, whoever in the department, and a few of them are still serving. And for the ones for this matter, which is got the permit, even the city, if it was not, doesn't need it, we still got it. And in this case, even follow what they told us, and they still without notice torn down the property and take the belongings away. And for those people, whoever involved in those decisions, and they should resign. Another thing, I have another person, so party, he has something to say about it. So please let him talk about it. He's tied with Huang or Peter. Yeah, I can hear you.
I just want to say that for these past three years, I've noticed this situation, which has been an ongoing legal battle involving the Wang family, has not come to any resolution. And I think it would be the best of both the Wang family as well as the city if they could simply be amenable to having a neutral third party, some for a party who's knowledgeable about this in the legal field or planning field, who has no ties to the city of Cupertino, who could help to be able to bring this to closure. Otherwise, I think in the long run, that the family is going to suffer intensely from the financial burden of massive fines and penalties, which is going to do no good whatsoever, particularly for people who live in Cupertino for more than 10 years without incident. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Call-in user, we are going to go on to Dennis Cunningham. Welcome, Dennis.
Okay, we'll unmute. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council members. I'm Dennis Cunningham. I've been a resident of Cupertino for about 45 years. I saw an article on the front page of the San Jose Mercury this morning that made me want to talk to the council tonight. It was about work from home taking root in California culture. It's unfortunate that it's taken the pandemic to bring this about, but nevertheless, it has. I'm retired now, but my career was as an HR executive at NASA Ames Research Center. As a youngster in the mid to late 70s, I proposed to NASA headquarters that we create a policy of allowing work from home in appropriate situations. I called it flex-a-place. It was probably an idea that was a little bit before its time because we didn't have the implementing technologies that are available today. My proposal was not adopted by NASA for the entire agency, but we at Ames were given the ability to implement it on a limited basis, sort of like a crazy California idea. Now, in the last two years or so, the pandemic has made work from home necessary. But as the impact of COVID is hopefully receding, a lot of organizations are now looking at their policies. At this time, when we have a new city manager and some new members coming on the council, I urge the city to reaffirm our current flexibilities. Two particular examples are city council meetings and the city staff. Council meetings, right now, are available for active attendance from home, just like I'm doing, and in person. And I was heartened to see that tonight, even some of the council members elected to work remotely. Hey, that's good. This process makes it possible for many more citizens to participate. I urge the council to contribute, to continue this hybrid meeting structure into the future, even if it's not motivated by pandemic concerns. And also, since the city, as a city, we need to be competitive in the job market, I urge that we recognize the importance of work from home flexibility in attracting and retaining a high-quality staff. It's an outstanding example of a low-cost, high-value perk. As today's newspaper states, it's become the new normal for a large segment of the workplace. Thanks for your attention. Low-cost, high-value perk is a good thing. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Dennis. Much appreciated. And we will go on to Peggy Griffin, next on Zoom. Welcome, Peggy. And just to give everyone the comfort of definitiveness, after Peggy, we have San R again. We have the blue cards that we had mentioned earlier. Madam City Clerk, are there any further blue cards for oral communications?
No, Mayor.
And have you received any emails from your cityclerk@cupertino.org account?
I have not.
Okay, so that will comprise the list of oral communications. We are on to Peggy Griffin, Griffin, rather. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, councilmembers, city manager Wu, and city attorney Jensen. I have two items to discuss tonight. First, this is the last evening that this particular council is in session. Mayor Paul and Councilman Willie will be leaving. I'd like to thank you all for all your hard work, the long hours you've spent away from your family and day jobs. To improve our city and our lives, you have brought more transparency, opportunity for public comment and engagement, even during almost three years of COVID. Communication with the public has improved significantly. There is more oversight, more involvement by our commissions, and you have on staff a city manager and a city attorney very experienced and knowledgeable about land use. Those of you who are leaving are leaving us in a better place than when you started. Those of you who remain, I hope, continue this amazing job. Thank you all for what you do and have done. Second, I want to make the council, staff, and public aware of what's happening behind the scenes on Main Street. When the project was approved, there was an agreement that the restaurants would not exceed a certain percentage of the total square footage. This was because the public wanted a grocery store, some place to buy goods in an area that lacks it. I recently found out that the planning department is in the process of changing this, reneging on this promise. This is a form of bait and switch. Please uphold the promise you made to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is San R. Welcome, San. And San, you'll need to unmute your microphone to be heard.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, very good. So I want to thank the city council for the work that you have done over the past two years. I want to congratulate the mayor on his eight years of service and commitment to the city across different city councils, ending in his role as mayor. And I want to thank Councilmember John Willey for his tireless championing of restaurants courses. As this election has come to an end, I'd like to also welcome the three city council members who will be staying on in the next city council. And an early welcome to the new members that will be joining in. I hope that the new city council will look at the needs of residents in a way that is connected with people. I urge and encourage the new city council to meet and mingle with your residents across neighborhoods, visit the parks, visit the homes. It is not just to ask for votes, but do that on a regular basis and understand the pains and needs of Cupertino citizen. The top mind for Cupertino is crime and break-ins. We have car break-ins happening all the time. We have home break-ins, especially in this holiday season. I urge you to work with the West Valley Patrol and make sure they prioritize staffing to patrol neighborhoods at night across the city. I urge you to work with West Valley Patrol to ensure that they are prioritizing crime and not taking parents who are off dropping kids to school. Top of mind for residents is also the need for more entertainment in Cupertino. I was in the old bowling alley, the bowling alley at Walcomall, and it was completely packed on a late Saturday afternoon. We are running out of entertainment options in Cupertino. And so as the new city council comes in, I urge you to think big. Think big about creating a legacy that will last beyond yourselves for the next 10, 20, 30, 50 years. And so while it's great to do projects that are sustainability and environment-friendly, I also encourage you to think big and look at bringing the residents facilities such as entertainment, more bowling alleys, more restaurants and coffee shops. Think about approving food truck designated zones. Neighboring cities, San Eclair and Sunnyvale, have food trucks that we don't have here. Thank you once again for the outgoing city council members, and a welcome to the people.
Thank you very much, San. And I do see one more hand raised in Zoom. Unfortunately, we are going to abide by the requirements to put your hand up by the time the first person is done speaking or within three minutes, and both of those times elapsed. And so I'm going to go ahead and move to our blue cards. Those are from Felix, Stephanie, Annie, Aspen, and Bruno. For our first set of comments that are consolidated in a presentation, welcome the team of the Tornado Robotics under the First Robotics Lego League. And we're thrilled to have you here. You'll have, oh, so you'll want to go up to the microphone over there. And if you're providing us materials, feel free to do that. But because you have five people consolidated, we allow up to two minutes each for up to 10 minutes. And so, welcome. And we're very much looking forward to your presentation.
Hello, everybody. We are First Lego League team called Team Tornado. We are here to present our innovation project, which is one of the three parts of First Lego League. The other two parts of FLL are robotics and core values. Our innovation project is called Personal Hydro 2.0, or PH2 for short. The reason we are giving this presentation is since our mayor, Darcy Paul, and Councilwoman John Willey were very kind to listen to our presentation beforehand and to give us feedback. They recommended that we let the whole city of Cupertino know about our project and how it saves energy. We'd like to thank them for their support.
Personal Hydro 2.0, or PH2, is a microhydro-powered generator capable of generating electricity when inserted into a faucet or screwed onto a garden hose. It produces 12 volts when water is running, enough to power a 10-watt LED or to store energy in a battery.
This device can have an impact on Cupertino and its energy needs. There's a very important relationship between water and energy because water is needed to generate energy, and energy is needed to treat water. This cycle is called the Water-Energy Nexus.
And if we could just pause, video, if you could pause the timer. I noticed that you guys are putting items on the overhead projector as you're speaking. Is the expectation that those items are visible? Just to clarify. Okay, so just to let you know, until this moment, those items have not been visible. And so you might want to take that into account as you're speaking. So just pause your time. I apologize for that. And so please feel free to continue with your presentation.
There could also be bigger applications of this microhydro power system. In order to pump water to houses with higher elevation, the pressure of the water must be high. But houses with low elevation will have higher pressures that are reduced with pressure reduction valves. We could put a microhydro power system in addition to a pressure reduction valve, which could help recover wasted energy.
The energy saved could be repurposed to do tasks around the house, such as running the motion-activated faucet and charging mobile devices. So in conclusion, installing PH2 in homes will hope with a greener and better future for our city. For those who are interested in more details, you can watch our video using a QR code that we will pass out at the end. Please also fill out the survey. It would be great if you could let us know your thoughts on our prototype and how you think we can make it better. Also, if you think that this can help our city be greener, let us know. Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, wonderful. And I'll note that the QR code, in video, if you could, oh, wonderful. And so that QR code is now on the slide on the screen. And thank you very much. Best of luck, and we greatly appreciate it. Uh, best of luck, and uh, we greatly appreciate it. All right, folks, we're on to our next public speaker on our blue cards. That is Jennifer Griffin.
I think I was a little young for Legos, but uh, my younger brothers played with them. Um, anyway, uh, good evening, everyone, and thank you to Darcy and John for your years of service. Um, you guys have been here very, very late some evenings, and I think the city is much, much better for your presence here. So thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to talk about a very, very discouraging thing that happened last week. The Graves House, which we had been trying to preserve, actually caught fire last Wednesday night and burned. I don't, I don't know if I could put this on the overhead, but the um, Preservation Action Council of San Jose actually had it on their header. Is this how we do it here?
Yes.
This is the home that was an 1868 Italianate uh, farmhouse. And then I'll show you what it looked like before. Uh, this was the home, if you can see here. Uh, it had been continuously occupied by the same family from 1868 to 2020. You do not find that in California. I'm going to start out, I actually went to school with Hammond's from the Snyder Hammond House. I went to school with the Mr. Graves, who I believe is from the Graves family, and a lot of Murphys, which are from the pioneering family in Sunnyvale. That doesn't happen a lot. I went to Homestead and local schools. I didn't know that then, but I have actually talked to some of the Murphy uh, people I went to school with, and they are the, the pioneering family from 1849. So to go back to, I'll get to the Graves House again in just a minute. I have one minute. We have our own historic home, the Stockle Meyer House. Mr. Stockle Meyer was one of the founders of Cupertino. It's time to restore this farmhouse. We have the money, we have the house secured. Mr. Stockle Meyer actually, I believe, founded the California History Center in the Petri Trion at Deans College. It's time to preserve his home. The Graves Home was a project um, that the Cal, uh, I'm a member of the Preservation Action Council of San Jose, which is their history group. This is on their um, endangered eight, and it's been a project. The plan is now, they have been trying to get it to Kelly Park for over two years. I will tell you right now, there is an active group now working to get it moved to Kelly, and that there is um, people, me included, that are working very, very hard to make sure it does. Please donate money to these. Let's get the Stockle Meyer House fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is John Kehoe.
Hello. Thank you, council members, for this opportunity. My name is John Kehoe, and I describe myself as a naturalist and citizen scientist. With this brief address, I hope to inform this council regarding your decision on the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. Please choose option B. The water savings listed in the comparative cost tables are stunning. Option A reveals that the golf course requires significant water and more funding in order to remain operational. Water is a precious resource. Drought is an ongoing concern here in California, and with our statewide habit of over pumping groundwater, we are depleting our aquifers. Climate forecast models indicate that our recent rains are not indicative of an end to the drought. With our water tables dropping, freshwater availability will become marginal. The entire San Francisco Bay Area has been identified as one of the nation's water scarcity hotspots. This scarcity will inevitably lead to political and legal conflicts, especially when we count for our increasing population density. Habitat enhancements are desperately needed now, and this council's decisions will have countless long-term benefits. With option B, local folks will be able to share the increased beauty and wonder of our enhanced natural world right here in Cupertino. Imagine the possibilities. This approach might be accomplished by reaching out to local nonprofit organizations and open space agencies. Also, implement and adopt a park feature within the city government and harbor a new era of neighborhood participation. By expanding wildlife habitat, we can foster a new wave, a local park stewardship where everyone can experience the beauty of our natural world. Volunteer opportunities could open where students participate in these outdoor workshops as they learn about the fascinating life cycle of our birds, bees, small terrestrial, and aquatic critters. I have six years volunteering experience at Ulistrac Natural Area in the city of Santa Clara. I began there in 2015 and later joined their nonprofit Unirep. The most recent restoration grant at Ulistrac was funded in the spring of 2016, and through numerous work sessions, we planted several hundred native plants. It's amazing to see what can uh, be accomplished on an old golf course. I employed the city's efforts in expanding natural areas in this end, in this era of rapidly uh, rapidly built high-density housing at the expense of depletion of biodiversity. This council's legacy would withstand the test of, of time. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, and council members. My name is Connie Cunningham, been a resident here 34 years. On November 15th, I spoke to you about plunging diversity, biodiversity worldwide. Biodiversity is all the different kinds of life you'll find in one area, like the Bay Area. All the variety of animals, birds, plants, butterflies, bees, and bacteria work together in an intricate web to maintain balance and support life. The San Jose Mercury reported today that beginning Thursday in Montreal, the United Nations will be holding their biodiversity summit. A study by the One Earth Journal was quoted that governments have not yet succeeded in bending the curve on biodiversity decline. Scientists have proposed six areas for action. One area is greater involvement of local communities like us. Cupertino has begun progress to these goals. Three elements of note. Bird Safe Design and Dark Skies Ordinance was passed by council in 2021. It addresses two environmental issues that help protect biodiversity: reduction in the use of glass and reduction in light pollution. The Parks and Rec Master Plan states that nature receive the most and strongest support of the priority goals for the Parks and Recreation System. And Cupertino's Climate Action Plan 2.0 has a guiding principle to establish climate adaptation measures such as protecting biodiversity. From a joint letter from six environmental groups, in the summer of 2014, Cupertino completed an $18 million, six-year project to construct a multi-use trail along the Creek Corridor, to restore Stevens Creek and Blackberry Farm and the Stockle Meyer property, and to restore habitat and open space along the creek. Cupertino has an unusual city work plan 2022 um, item for analyzing the future needs of Blackberry Farm Golf Course. It is based upon former council discussions in 2014 and 2015. There are two options in the report. Option B is to restore nature to 16 acres of city land. Thousands of people voiced their response to surveys and other outreach. Over half were in favor of restoring nature. That our council thought in such terms is testament to the values of our community. What can city council continue to do? Three things I can mention now. Add to your checklist a new question about biodiversity and California Bay Area native trees for every land issue that comes before you. Advocates of nature will be speaking to you. Listen to them. Hear them. Biodiversity is critical to human life. When this action item for Blackberry Farm comes to council, approve restoring nature. Option B. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Our next speaker is Rhoda Frye.
Good evening. I'd like to echo the comments, the laudatory comments made by Peggy, San, and Jennifer. And with respect to Jennifer's comments for restoring uh, Stockle Meyer and Hammond Snyder, this, this is our heritage, and we should do that. Um, I'm going to switch to a common topic that I have come here to talk about, which is uh, Lehigh and to, to a lesser extent, the Stevens Creek Quarries. On November 17th, the county held a consequential meeting. It's called the Housing Land Use and Environment Transportation Meeting, affectionately called HULET. Um, I would recommend listening to that. And, and Supervisor Smidion was absolutely stunning, I have to say, during that meeting. It was really, go see it. Anyway, um, December 15th, uh, the Santa Clara County Planning Commission is going to have a meeting accepting a status report from both Lehigh and Stevens Creek Quarries. As you may know, Stevens Creek Quarry has had no land use authority to operate the quarry for, huh, I don't know, what, since 2015? Their conditional use permit expired, uh, which is quite impressive. They, uh, the county allows them 1,300 trucks per day, which really is not a limit, realistically a limit. And moving on to the Lehigh Quarry. So Supervisor Smidion has expressed his, his desires to be, to stop cement production, to terminate quarrying, and to move forward with reclamation. I would like to see something, one more thing added to that, and that is uh, for protecting our environment and uh, our general population, particularly with respect to truck traffic. So uh, you may have seen Lehigh's announcement regarding terminating cement production, and I will tell you without hesitation that this announcement was overly broad. Um, specifically, they're terminating the use of the kiln, which was responsible for most of the onsite air pollution. Now, keep in mind, there's a lot of offsite air pollution. Getting dust from the quarry, and we're also getting a lot of pollution from the trucks. So stopping the kiln, yep, it's a big deal. However, Lehigh is planning and has already endeavored to have four new businesses on site. All right? One of them is cement distribution, which they said was going to be temporary. Um, they intend to continue importing cement and exporting it. So as a distribution center. Now, keep in mind, they have, their zoning does not allow for industrial uses. Um, the second one is to continue manufacturing cement with imported materials. Um, the third is operation of a new rock plant, uh, for which I do not believe they have yet land use authority. And last is turning the site into a landfill, which is what they had talked about doing in 2019, instead of doing onsite uh, reclamation. Um, they intend to have their, publish their plans in the first quarter of next year. Stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Our next and final speaker in Oral Communications is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I, like Peggy spoke earlier, I too, recently and quite, very recently and quite accidentally, became aware of a, an agreement signed by staff and another, an agency to assist at the cost of close to $40,000 um, in determining, apparently whether Main Street should be allowed to change the makeup of the uses there significantly by replacing what is supposed to be and was determined for good reason to be um, a major retail shop that was not restaurant. And that was where the Target built, that's the Target building. It's been, it's been more than 10 years since the resolution to make those numbers 40% restaurant and the retail spaces and the rest others. Changing an EIR or MND or revisiting it to change numbers is a little um, misrepresentative of the reason that those limits were made in the first place. The reason was, the community and city at the time believed that it made sense, and the city needed actual retail, not just restaurants. So they limited to 40%, the square footage of what could be retail. In fact, under the parking lot, those, all those things that are now restaurants, except for maybe one, um, were supposed to be shops, and they were designed architecturally so that they could open up, and the shops were supposed, you know, they wanted, they were calling it the marketplace, and they wanted it to open up and people would, they'd bring out the wares onto the sidewalk. That is why there's such a deep covered sidewalk there, so they said. So that was before the loss and the death of Valco. We need more retail now than we needed then. We don't need more restaurants. And I believe what's slated at what will be, whatever it's going to be named, or whatever it's going to be at the Valco site, I'm sure we'll have far more restaurants than we need. My point being, um, it was over a year ago, I think it was in November, November 2nd, I brought this theory up that I had heard Target may be replaced by a restaurant, and I was concerned because I knew what the recommend, or requirements were, and the resolution was, excuse me.
Thank you, Lisa. That's just three minutes, so.
Because when you're sick, you can't think right. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And that concludes Oral Communications for this evening. We are on to item number three on our agenda, that is, reports by council and staff. Item number three specifically is a set of brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. I'll remind everyone that it has been approximately three weeks, actually exactly three weeks, since our last regularly scheduled council meeting on November 15th. And so these are report outs on activities um, that don't have to do with our regular committee assignments uh, since November 15th. And so I'll remind my colleagues that these are about a minute each, and so uh, if you have a whole bunch of things you've done, talk fast. And if you have any brief follow-ups on Oral Communications, uh, that's probably a decent time to mention very briefly then as well. Councilmember Willie, I see your hand is raised, and then I'll go to uh, Councilmember Wei after that, who has a hand raised in Zoom.
I wanted to quick jump in. Our, our speaker, Team Tornado, is just exiting, but I wanted to be sure and let them know. I greatly appreciated your presentation. Your ideas just really inspire me for the next generation and the things that you're going to be coming up with to help our community and the world at large. So thank you so much for coming tonight. Really appreciated it. Uh, next, I'll simply mention that we had our city tree lighting. To me, this, this I think means more than it has the last couple years because of the pandemic. The number of people that we saw over at Quinlan for the tree lighting, I think it gives us a renewed sense of uh, community and getting out together, being with our fellow uh, community members. The Stockle Meyer House, yeah, I too really believe in preservation of history. There's kind of a similar type saying, you know, those who forget history are doomed to repeat it, you know, but let's not lose our history. Let's, I hope the incoming city council will in fact designate a certain amount of money that's needed to preserve our important um, buildings that we do have. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. We have Councilmember Wei next.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'm going to report three activities. I think a few of us went to the National League of Cities Summit in Kansas City. There are really a lot of good sessions that we can learn from other cities' practices. The two um, sessions that I really like is, one is uh, the integrated public safety using data-driven um, technology. So I, I think I'll bring a brief report to our city manager after that. And also, the other one is talking about mental health, um, to build in conversations with our about mental health, to build in conversations with our residents about well-being of residents. So I'm really impressed with those two presentations. And another thing, event that we, I went is for the forum, one of our major employees. The forum is the retirement community. They, we hosted, they hosted a sustainability presentation. We, city manager Pamela Wu and Andrei are sustainability manager. We had a tour with the facility with their brand-new LEED-certified member care units, and they reported on what they are doing with sustainability, environmentally-friendly activities. And Andrei did a great report on what the city is doing. So there are going to be collaborations between the forum and the city. We're hoping to make that facility a, a proud example of how a major facility can become really energy-sufficient and moving forward. And the last thing I will report is I joined the Chamber's Legislative Action Committee, and it's very interesting because one resident just mentioned about retail. So it's by Jim Randolph, who is the executive VP of New Market. He designs and works with developers for retails. So his topic is what's going on with retail. Post-pandemic retail is different. So there are a lot of new information that we can learn from, you know, chambers and other cities of how we can attract retailers that residents can benefit the residents. That's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much, councilmember Wei. And I don't see any other hands raised at this time, but let me check in with either Vice Mayor Chow or, okay, so you both have a hand raised, Vice Mayor Chow, as well as councilmember Moore. Let's start with Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Now is the time to make a brief comment, public comment. I think one member mentioned having hybrid meeting to continue after pandemic. I think one of the city work program items for this year is specifically that. Not only council members commission meetings to continue to be hybrid, so the public can attend from home, especially I think seniors and families with kids and people who are disabled and really need this opportunity to participate.
Okay. Vice Mayor, I do have an indicator from our city attorney. I think perhaps it's been a little too extensive, but I'll let city attorney Jensen speak.
Yeah, I would just like to remind the council that in responding to public comment, generally you are allowed to refer the item to staff, request the item be added to a future agenda, or request a report from staff. And so extensive commentary is generally not appropriate.
Okay. Thanks very much. Vice Mayor Chow, please proceed with your reports.
Okay. So for the Main Street item, I would like staff to bring it to the council's attention. I understand when an item is of high public interest, the staff can refer to the council rather than decide at the staff level. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have councilmember Moore.
All right. So I also attended the National League of Cities Conference in Kansas City. That was November 16 through the 20th. One of the parts that I really enjoyed was the tour of the 18th and Vine neighborhood area, which was a previously redlined area of the city. It is now being revitalized, and they are working to prevent gentrification and build inclusionary housing in that area. On November 27, the Los Altos city council member Lynette Lee Ing, Mayor Paul and myself visited 33 Goff Street in San Francisco, the Dignity Moves site. There are 80 temporary homeless individual units there. And I'll let Mayor Paul say more about this, since he coordinated the tour with Dignity Moves, Elizabeth Funk. And on December 3, four of us attended the Cupertino Tree Lighting Event. And I want to mention that Parks and Recreation Director Rochelle Sander did a wonderful job, and so did her excellent team. It was fabulous to be out there. And thank you to the Homestead High School Choir, directed by Jeff Morton, and our red-suited special guest who conducted the tree lighting countdown. Thank you.
Great. Red-suited special guest, eh? All right. So, well, as my colleagues mentioned, we did go to the National League of Cities. I wanted us to reengage, to make sure that we got involved with this organization because it's so critically important on a national level. And I know that, you know, we have varying degrees of political approaches, but I know that in our council, we were run the gamut, and there were probably, you know, lookout for a council member from Cupertino being perhaps the president of the National League of Cities in the next couple of years. And so I bid the best of luck to all of that type of effort. But also, as councilmember Moore alluded to, I was also on that tour of 18th and Vine. And in fact, that's the part of the country that I'm originally from. When I go and visit my parents, I go exactly to that area of Kansas City to go pick up some barbecue from the granddaddy of Kansas City barbecue, Arthur Bryant's. Just ask a New Yorker, writer Calvin Trillin from the 1970s. But in any event, it is extraordinary. It was truly redlined. So you read about redlining here in California. Some of it was a little bit more subtle, but this was not subtle at all. This is basically drawing a line around a neighborhood and saying, this is completely segregated, right? And so it has repercussions up to the modern day. And we got to see in these various spaces how they're revitalizing these neighborhoods, piece by piece. I will say that some of the areas look extremely similar to the type of density that they're trying to put into in this area and really throughout the country. So basically, cement on the two floors and the bottom with wood on the five floors and top. I mean, they're pretty much, it's almost like they have the same Lego pieces throughout the various areas. But interestingly enough, they do have these areas in this particular district around 18th and Vine in Kansas City where they are going and taking the older buildings. They actually have a castle, a real, like, it looks like a castle, and it was a debtor's prison. And they actually had the debtor's prisoners quarry more from the next-door quarry and make public buildings. And so if you had a water bill, you went to the water department made out of these same quartz stones. And so it was extremely fascinating, and we got a lot of ideas about how to, you know, go about things perhaps on the local level as well. But I think, again, going back to my original statement, I wanted Cupertino to get back into this flow, the National League of Cities. I believe this is our first involvement in a few years. So I was really happy that councilmember Wei and councilmember Moore were there as well. Very quickly, we had our Economic Development Committee interviews on the 29th. That's a multi-year project by the city council, and I'm really glad we were able to bring that to fruition in order to populate that committee. And then earlier on the 29th, I met with representatives of the PGA Tour Superstore, together with our city manager. And they have a ribbon cutting on Saturday that will outlive my time on council and as mayor. And so you'll have a new mayor on that day. But this is an incredible store, so please go there. It's where the old Stein Mart used to be on Homestead, next to Safeway over there. Tree lighting ceremony, that was mentioned. On Sunday, I was invited by a student environmental and sustainability group to speak to their Zoom conference that they were having. And that group is called Project 17. Project 17 refers to 17 United Nations Sustainability Initiatives that they're having people socialize and talk about through an educational, you know, push internationally. And so that has, you know, not surprisingly, come to our local area as well. So that was a real privilege to be able to interface with the students there. And I'm just, you know, so glad to have that kind of a community where we have an ecosystem of students talking about all these various issues. It's a very nice thing to see. And then finally, again, the city manager Pamela Wu and I, we did meet today with the sheriff-elect, the presumptive sheriff-elect, I should say, Bob Johnson, earlier today in City Hall. And we spoke to, I'm just, you know, trying to get the interface going. Because of course, as you saw earlier today, our sheriff's captain is retiring, and we have a new sheriff's captain coming in. We just want to get a sense of, you know, where things are, you know, going. And I think that Sheriff Johnson, Bob Johnson, is going to take a relatively lighter hand in terms of making sure that things are stable in the immediate. And I think that there will be a lot of good things happening in the sheriff's office. So together with the idea of making sure that the public is safe, and finally, and I apologize, I am going a little bit over the time for this, but I'll just say this one last thing. I also reconnected our city to the US mayor's conferences. And these are really excellent national meetings that take place twice a year. And so when I went there in June to the conference that was held in Reno, and I've said this before on the dais, the most sobering moment was knowing that people are basically saying, for active shooting incidents, you have to prepare your community as if it is something that is going to happen. You have no choice. Unfortunately, that is the reality of our situation. And so that was one of the conversational points that we had with the incoming presumptive sheriff-elect. And so hopefully, we'll be having those types of socializations and types of efforts to make our community safer. So those are the report outs for item number three. We'll go on to item number four. This is our report on committee assignments. Would anyone like to go first on the committee assignments? And that is, councilmember Moore has a hand raised. Councilmember Moore.
Okay. So on November the 28th, the Audit Committee received the Moss Adams Internal Audit Status Report and requested information on policies. And as a reminder, we're doing a multi-year internal controls audit. In that update, they mentioned the initiation of the Fraud, Waste and Abuse Program, which is on our city's website, that we're working on a library construction audit, budget process review, and policy review for ongoing support. And there are multiple policies and procedures which are being worked on. And I know that we had a contract subcommittee, and that, that project is really being taken over by Moss Adams. Next, we reviewed the Monthly Treasurer's Investment Report and recommended it be filed with council. Of interest was the economic update regarding interest rates. And we reviewed the Monthly Treasurer's Report and requested supplementary information come to council and recommended filing with the council. And we continued the budget review after a robust discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Moore. And I don't see any further hands raised from our council. I see councilmember Willie is indicating next to me. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Our Silicon Valley Clean Energy, you know, climate change, climate change, it is so important. So our meeting is next week, but I will say that if anybody hasn't seen it, the strategic plan for Silicon Clean and Silicon Valley Clean Energy is now a published document. You can definitely see it electronically on their website, and I'll highlight the two that I find the most, most important. The expanding their clean energy sources, meaning getting more power provided by clean energy. And number two, expanding the customer base. In order to get the clean energy to replace the fossil fuels, we got to get more customers utilizing Silicon Valley Clean Energy as their supplier, as opposed to the more traditional PG&E that is going to be relying more heavily on fossil fuel-generated power. And then the, I had previously mentioned, you know, the Rabbit Brush Solar Project, which has been, now been turned on. And so I have details, 40 million watts of solar power, enough to provide 10,937 homes. That's going to help our, our climate change bring that down. And so I think I'll go ahead and stop there and let it go to the other ones. But by all means, if you're not a customer of Silicon Valley Clean Energy, give it some very serious thought. Our environment depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Willie. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. On the 17th, I attended the Disaster Council meeting. There was a weather forecast for this year, and the evacuation planning, and the Citizens Corp update. And I'm glad to hear that there are 35 new volunteers who signed up.
Great. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Wei, did you have anything that you want to report out? No? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and report out. So as you know, I'm on the Board of the VTA until the end of my term. And so I'm also on one of the committees, and that's abbreviated SSTPO, that's Safety, Security, and Transit Planning and Operations. And so we had as our major item on the SSTPO meeting of the 18th of November to talk about the light rail system. And so the light rail system throughout the pandemic, and also due to the tragic shooting that occurred in May of 2021 at their corporation yard, they were shut down for a bit. And so they're starting to get their activities back up. However, VTA's light rail system is actually, from a Fairbox recovery perspective, by a fairly significant margin, the most underperforming light rail system in the entirety of the country. And so we're looking at trying to figure out, what do we do, you know, in the future? Because, you know, frankly, we had a countywide transit plan, and we were supposed to have a bit of a hub-and-spoke system. As we all know, in the West Valley, we don't really have too much of a, of a game with regard to transit. And so that's a conversation that we're having on the SSTPO level. Take a flip side to that, as the VTA board member representing the five West Valley cities throughout these last couple of years and through the end of this month, we were talking about on the board meeting on December 1st this past week, the things that we need to be doing in order to move forward, the downtown BART extension. Okay? So this is a downtown underground five-mile extension of the BART line. The federal estimate of this is now $9.2 billion. And these are real dollars. This is really happening. And on December 1st, the VTA board made some critical decisions to move this forward. And so a number of land use decisions were made with regard to eminent domain downtown, and some significant funding allocations were made that moved forward this massive single bore drill that is going to be created and going to be tunneling this extension of the, of the BART system to Deardon Station downtown. And so I don't know in the next 10 or 15 or 20 years, you know, whether those dots will connect, but we will have that wherewithal. And I hope that people that are succeeding us, including councilmember Moore, who has been the VTA Policy Advisory Committee Chair for the last two years, will, you know, see those dots and try to build out a system so that we can be quite robust from transit perspective for a long time in the future. Because $9.2 billion is a lot of money to extend to downtown San Jose. So it'd be good to see that throughout the entirety of the county eventually. As councilmember Moore mentioned, we're both on the Audit Committee. I think that, you know, overall, the flow has gone well over the course of the last eight years. A lot has been, you know, going into discussion of the city finances. But the bottom-line truth of matter is that the city of Cupertino's finances are incredibly robust. If anything, we're looking at something where we actually end up, if you'll pardon the expression, we sock away a lot of money. And so what ends up happening is that we have a lot of examinations as to, you know, what to do and what might, you know, become of that. But the bottom-line is that you have a lot of accountabilities and a lot of examinations on how to go ahead and report out. The Audit Committee has done a lot to make sure that we're adhering to both the municipal code and state requirements on those reporting bases this year. So that's been excellent to see. Finally, the County Unhoused Task Force, which is chaired this year by Cindy Chavez. It was started by supervisor, then supervisor, I should say, Dave Cortez back in 2020, right at the very beginning of the pandemic, met for its last meeting on November 30. I am the representative of Cupertino, as is councilmember Moore, to the unhoused task force of the county. And we gave various reports out to our member jurisdictions, which comprise the cities of the county, as to our respective efforts to try to combat this problem. And I will, in the interest, in the interest of full disclosure, state that I really, you know, from a substantive perspective, am trying to socialize as much as possible the idea of getting some supportive housing and services in Cupertino, because I think we really need it. These types of issues crop up all the time, and they're not getting any better. So that is my report out. And so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five. This is our report on subcommittee assignments. Would anyone like to start us out on subcommittee assignment reports? And I see that councilmember Moore has a hand raised.
Okay. So I categorized the unhoused task force as being a subcommittee, so I didn't report out on the previous item. So on November 30, I also attended the unhoused task force with Mayor Paul and council representatives across from the county. And we had a follow-up meeting with staff on December 5 to work on our meeting prep and process and discuss options moving forward to serve our unhoused community. And we also shared the 33 Goff site visit that we did, which is a project by Dignity Moves with, as I mentioned before, 80 units. Okay? Okay, so I don't know if you wanted to share a little bit more about the Dignity Moves site, but it was pretty inspiring what they had done using two, two separate parking lots and securing the area and in having the, as I mentioned, the 80 units. Each one was about eight by eight. And each little building had two of these units together, which could be lifted by a forklift onto the back of a tractor trailer so that they could take apart the, the, the project when they were completed. And they planned to keep it there for a few years until a new development is ready to be constructed in that space.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I don't see further hands raised or indicators. Did anyone want to report out on a subcommittee activity? If not, I have a couple of subcommittees that I'll indicate since our time on the 15th. First is the Bub Road Subcommittee, Councilmember Willie and I. But I have to say mostly Councilmember Willie. You have taken the, I don't even, I think saying the laboring war is a miscarriage of justice. You have really led this effort, Councilmember Willie. And I'm deeply appreciative of you reaching out to the various property owners on the, on the east side of Bub Road between Stevens Creek Boulevard on the north and then McCrone Road on the, on the south side to see what the possibilities are. And so we did meet with a couple of people in City Hall earlier this, this month. And one was a developer, a local developer, and one was a real estate broker. And there was a lot of good information with regard to, you know, kind of thinking through the various types of evaluations people are making in the realm of affordable housing right now. And it seemed to me that the tax credits were extremely important. And when people are calculating out what makes sense and what pencils out, they're doing a lot of these pragmatic valuations based upon what kind of money is going to be coming in on, on the taxation-based level. And it seems like affordable housing is, to the industry, up to, after a certain point of development, kind of the no-brainer right now. So it looks quite hopeful with regard to being able to have socialized that. I'm glad that we put that forward. And then with regard to the follow-up on what Councilmember Moore was mentioning, yes, we did have some really good discussions on the unhoused task force. I, I do have, I'm going to save my comments basically till the end of this meeting because I actually have a, a request for a future agenda item at that time. And so when we're talking about visiting the Dignity Moves site at 33 Goff Street and whatnot, you know, I, I did, I will mention at the unhoused task force, I asked whether it would be a good idea to declare a shelter crisis. And so that is essentially the crux of my, my question for future, you know, potential study session. So I don't see any further hands raised at this time. We'll go on to our next item on the agenda. This is item six. It is a city manager update. Madam City Manager Pamela Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I won't take up too much time. I don't have any update for the community or council other than really wanted to take a moment to thank council for a very productive year. As we near the upcoming Swearing Ceremony this coming Friday, I want to just use this moment to thank each one of you for your hard work, your dedication in furthering your vision, leading the city in the right direction. And with that in mind, I am looking forward to 2023 with greater accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. We are on to item number seven. That is a department update. And I believe that today's department update is from Community Development.
That is right, Mayor Paul. So we have Acting Director Luke Connolly to provide you an overview of community development. Luke?
Okay, thank you. Let me share my screen here. You bear with me. I'm not sure why my, let me try this again.
If you're trying to share a PDF, Luke. Oh, you got it. All right, great.
I think we got it now. Sorry about that little glitch. Thank you, Mayor Paul, members of the city councils, City Manager Wu. Just want to give a brief overview, kind of at a high-flying, you know, general level of the Community Development Department and what it consists of. I've been with the city one year now and in this acting position for just about one month. And okay, so just to get the Community Development Department at a glance, we essentially have four divisions. Code Enforcement is arguably a subset of the Building Division, but the Housing Division is essentially responsible for the management and administration of everything related to affordable housing, including the city's Community Development Block Grant Program. The Planning Division, which is really my background primarily, we do things like administer the general plan, long-range planning issues like that. But we also process discretionary permits. Lot of coordination with other divisions within the Community Development Department. Could say the same thing about the Building Division as well. Our Building Division is probably really our high-volume, our frontline division that most of the community homeowners, contractors interact with the most. Responsible for a lot of permit review and approval, plan checks, field inspections. And then we also have our fourth division again is Code Enforcement, which also touches a lot of bases, interacts really with a lot of members of the public, a lot of other divisions and departments within the city. This is an organizational chart. It's a little bit dated and I think overstates the staff size right now. But it gives you an idea of how the department is laid out with Housing Manager, Planning Manager, we have one departmental analyst, management analyst. And currently, our Chief Building Official also acts as the Assistant Director of the Department. Our Housing Department really consists of two people. So they're kind of a small, very tightly-run unit. The rest of the staff is pretty fairly equally spread, spread over the other three divisions in the department. And probably as much as any department, we really are not in our own silos. There's a lot of interaction among the department as a whole and even citywide. So, and with also a lot of public contact. Just briefly now touch on the different divisions. Again, it's the Housing Division is really a two-person group. We have the Housing Manager and one other staff. They administer really everything related to affordable housing in the city, whether it's a city-funded or Community Development Block Grant-funded program. Right now, there's a notice of funding availability that went out that is open through February related to our Housing and Human Services Program. The Below Market Rate Program is probably one of the more familiar to people, which administers the city's 142 below-market rate rental units and 121 ownership units. There's a significant waiting list, as you might imagine, in most cities in Silicon Valley to get to qualify for this program. In addition, the Housing Manager also is the primary liaison to the city's Housing Commission and is really responsible for carrying out the Work Program, which ranges quite a bit. The support for the unhoused, we have a program for Deans of Students, homeless jobs program, other special projects. Housing coordinates a lot of issues related to homelessness, particularly with our Public Works Department and Emergency Operations. And, you know, all other programs, again, I mean, there's a lot for a two-person division. There's a lot to coordinate. I think even more so as we've sort of ended, entered the COVID phase and things like homelessness have become more heightened issues. Moving to our Planning Division, then you can kind of break planning down really into long-range and current planning. Thinking of long-range as working on, say, your general plan or like right now, your housing element. These are really the documents that identify what the city's future wants to be. What are its objectives and goals? That's one aspect, aspect of planning, as well as current planning, which, you know, it could largely be characterized by development projects that come in and really reviewing to see that they are consistent with furthering the city's goals and objectives. On this slide, I just wanted to have a couple, again, quick pictures to kind of, you know, distinguish, say, what planning is looking at from building, how we kind of deal with projects more at the conceptual and early phase. So like the photo on the left, that's a typical site plan we would be looking at. You know, this is for the former Oak Site, the Westport Project. Where, you know, planners are thinking in terms more of things like land use and parking and how does the site layout? And the elevation at the bottom of the page is a good indication too of conceptually, what's a building going to look like? What's its height? What are the materials? What's its appearance? And generally, from there, projects get more defined as they head towards the construction stage. There's a lot of different functions within the Planning Department. Public Counter Service, Ball Planning and Building are very active. I understand in the first 11 months of this year, the department's received about 20,000 emails for different types of contact. Also, development and use permits. The department has either processed or has actively filed about 270 planning permits right now. As I said earlier, we've got our, our long-range plan. The housing element has obviously been a big project the last year. And we have other city work program items that fall into that category. There's a lot of coordinating with the Building, the Building Department on plan review and on business licenses, where you're checking for coordination with commercial projects to make sure that it's allowed land use within that zoning district. And I think with all of community development, there's a lot of collaboration between building, code enforcement, a lot of work that goes on between Public Works and community development, as well as economic development. Planning, our Planning Manager is the liaison to the Planning Commission, which typically meets twice a month on the Tuesdays that the council does not meet. There are a number of committees that the department interacts with regularly. The Environmental Review Committee, which is looking at projects that are subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. The City's Design Review Committee, more specific ad hoc type committees like the Community Engagement Plan, Strategic Advisory Committee, which is focused on the housing element. And there are also administrative hearings that planning is involved with on lower-level discretionary permits. Moving to the City's Building Division, again, this is kind of the, really the face of community development, the, the people that are at the counter, deal with a lot of public questions, work with contractors, architects. You can look at the, the numbers here and you get an idea of the amount of activity that's going on. This is through the first 11 months of the year. There have been over 10,000 inspections performed, and this is with five inspectors, which actually surprised me just at that number of how much activity that is. You've had about 2,200 building permits created. Again, these are all structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all the things that go into constructing a building. Almost 2,000 building permits have been issued. And over 2,700 plan reviews combining the Planning and Building Divisions have occurred in the first 11 months. So, again, this is a pretty high volume for the amount of staff that there is. I just wanted to add this slide. So it kind of revisits the same Westport project to distinguish as projects get more defined and progress towards the building permit and construction phase, that the level of the plan gets much more developed and you're looking at things like how interior spaces are used and ultimately progressing to, say, the right-hand side of the screen where you have onsite construction and inspections being tracked by the department to make things, sure things are built to code incorrectly. And really, all of what building is doing is very much driven by safety and accessibility. Our Code Enforcement Division is, again, fairly self-explanatory. They're involved with everything related to the code and making sure that it's followed, whether it's a, a planning-related issue or a building code. I've got a number of pictures, I think, that are kind of self-explanatory with the sort of issues that code enforcement faces on a regular basis. Issues of construction that likely required permits but may not have gotten them. Dealing with properties that could either be abandoned or just very poorly maintained that could potentially raise safety issues or even public nuisance issues if they're let go for an extended period of time. Again, issues here with like plumbing or even electrical where work has gone on that was unpermitted, that could create an unsafe condition. All of this kind of falls in the purview of code enforcement. Then you have more things that could potentially create a nuisance, like outside storage or outdoor activities that are just really not keeping a neighborhood character. Another example of that, while these are focusing on residential pictures, the same type of thing also applies to commercial areas. Code enforcement really covers the whole city, covers a wide range of issues. Then even things like this, where you have, say, services not being provided adequately that could potentially lead to problems. You know, code enforcement is largely driven by residents' concerns that are raised. Again, focus similar to building and planning is on health and safety and quality of life issues, you know, where you're trying to avoid any sort of blighted conditions or concentration of them. Obviously, in a, in a very desirable community like Cupertino, you're looking at maintaining properties consistent with property values and neighborhood character. And you try to address issues that, you know, are not allowed to accumulate. So if you're seeing things in neighborhoods that could be in transition or in distress, trying to head off things before they become larger problems or nuisances within an area. And of course, one of the final issues for code enforcement is compliance with all federal, state, and local laws. So what I don't have at the end is a, a pretty follow-up slide to let you know I'm done with the presentation. So I'll just say so now, that that concludes the presentation. A lot of you, I'm sure, are really familiar with the, the department, but just tried to give an overview for the, the council and anyone in the public who might not be that familiar. So that concludes the report.
Well, Acting Director Connolly, thank you very much. I'll make a brief comment on this. I'm very proud of our city and proud that we were able to bring this series of updates to the, to the public. And so this is something that I started this year. Hopefully, we can repeat it every half year or so and cycle through the departments to give that overview update. I, this is excellent. I'm just, I'm really, really pleased with how this worked out. So thanks very much, City Manager, and our various department heads and managers that did provide these updates over the last several months. We're on to our consent calendar, folks. And I'll remind everyone that item number 11 was already, was already continued to the December 20th meeting per our postponements on the beginning of our, of our meeting. And so would anyone like to speak to eight through, oh, thank you, eight, nine, 10, or, or 12 on consent calendar? And so I do have a blue card here for someone who'd like to speak on item number 12. But would anyone like to poll an item? Let me pull my Zoom function back up. I don't see anybody with a hand raised. And so let me ask our member of the public who is here with the blue card, Rhoda, did you want to poll the consent item or did you simply want to speak to it? Pull it? Okay. So we have a request from a member of the public for item number 12 to be polled. May I hear a motion on items eight through 10 as recommended in the agenda? Councilmember Willie moves eight through 10, correct?
So moved.
Okay. And is there a second? Councilmember Wei, would you like to second?
Yes, second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for items eight through 10 on consent as recommended in the agenda. Are there any further hands raised? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, could you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And we are on to item 12. Let's go ahead and start with our member of the public who requested that this be polled. As she's coming up to the lectern, I will read the subject. This is consider authorizing the city manager to award a construction contract with contingency budget for the Blackberry Farm Pool Improvements Capital Improvement Program or CIP project. Welcome, Rhoda. And so, Rhoda, why don't we do it this way? Why don't you just give us a sense of why you pulled the item? And then we can have staff speak to it. And then if you wanted to speak later on the item as a member of the public, please feel free to do so.
Got it. Okay, I will definitely like to speak later. But for now, reason to pull is $700,000. It's a lot of money. Project's been known apparently since 2019, didn't appear on the SIP. Why? And I think that for a project of this magnitude, the public needs to have more engagement, both fiscally and what, and what, what the project entails and the, and the details are of.
Okay, understood. Thank you, Rhoda. And I'll bring this back to our city manager. If you would like to introduce our speaker from the staff on this item number 12, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Paul. Introducing Acting-
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, introducing Acting Assistant City Manager Matt Morley.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, so this item is, uh, really a capital maintenance project. So it, we, we have a lot of things going on in the BlackBerry Farm area. Uh, and this one is the resurfacing of the pool plaster inside of the pools. It's a necessary project in order to keep the pools functional. Includes no other amenities other than, um, ADA upgrades that are required in order to be compliant with, uh, with the ADA. It's fairly straightforward. Project capital maintenance was in the CIP in 20, uh, 19, 20, 21 and this year as well. So it's in, it's in the CIP listed in the, in the book with the other projects, um, for folks to see. Uh, so we're, we're, um, looking to advance this project so we can keep the pools in good condition. We know they're heavily used. Um, the public really likes them. We'd like to keep them open every year. That concludes my report.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Director and Acting Assistant City Manager Morley. And so let's go to any members of the public that would like to speak on this item before we move it back to the council. And, um, Rhoda, I'm going to go ahead and have your blue card double as your public comment. Is that okay with the city clerk or Madam City Clerk? Did you want another blue card filled out? Uh, because as of right now, I don't actually have any, uh, zoom hands raised. And so let's, let's go to Rhoda then. Rhoda, uh, you'll have three minutes to speak on this item number 12.
Uh, first thing I thought was, oh, a splash pad is back. And, um, that was what the, the council had rejected that during the SIP. Um, I did take a little quick look at the plans and I submitted some comments regarding bringing the plans. I'm glad to see that splash pad isn't there, but I am still worried about scope creep. Um, this building in fact was part of a surprise scope creep, creek. Um, so, um, you know, we've known about it since 2019. I wasn't on the SIP. Um, $700,000 is a lot of money. And, um, as we've done with the golf course, I think we should look at the financial viability of this, of the pool business. Um, we have no idea how much our tax dollars are, uh, subsidizing, uh, this business because it has been removed from the enterprise fund. So I think that we need more information before embarking on this project. Do we need two pools, uh, in a riparian habitat? Um, so specifically to, to the smaller pools, originally the smaller pool had a slide and a diving board. Well, the diving board went away shortly after the city bought it. And now, um, all of a sudden, the slide has disappeared in 2022. Um, the only problem that we were aware of the slide was during the SIP that the city manager had said that, um, it required more training from, from, from staff. Uh, and it required, and, but it certainly having the slide there didn't justify having a splash pad when you look at the dollars and cents for, um, providing youth employment versus, uh, making a $500,000 investment in splash pad. Um, so that, that's, you know, what happened to the, the slide. Um, the other thing, uh, I would like to see, you know, potentially, and I know that you've already worked quite a bit in getting these plans developed and I only had a few seconds to look at them. Um, but, you know, if we're going to be spending this much money or investing this much money, um, with respect to the restrooms and changing areas, um, one of the things for ADA, um, I'm wondering whether we could kind of, is where there's potential for doing multipurpose such as having something that could act as NDA, uh, gender neutral, um, family changing room. Um, because it looks like, again, I only had a few minutes, that the only way to kind of go into an ADA bathroom is that then you're suddenly sharing a female or male space. So having, uh, universal, uh, opportunities, I think that, that, that would be a good thing. Um, also we are, I know we're doing really well financially, um, for now, uh, but we are entering, entering a time of economic uncertainty. And I sure would love to see the city, um, invest money on permanent affordable housing, not these, uh, developer projects that sunset after 45 or 55 years, depending whether they're owned or rented. Um, so please let's look at how we're spending our precious tax dollars. And also I'd like to see a little more community involvement before, uh, jumping into this program because I think that we have some opportunities for doing some tweaks here to make it a little better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rhoda. And we'll, uh, take it back. I, I don't believe that there are any further public comments, but let me just, for the, um, you know, sake, sake of caution. City Clerk, uh, at Cupertino.org, any emails during this time?
No, Mayor, I've not received anything.
Okay, great. So no further blue cards, no, um, hands raised on Zoom. Let's go ahead and bring this back to, um, council. Before we do that, because there's only one public comment, uh, Director Morley or Madam City Manager, did you want to speak to any of the?
Nothing further to add from us.
Nothing further to add. Okay. Okay. So we do have, uh, the item. There is, uh, recommended action, expressed concern from a member of the public. Would anyone like to start with comments or questions and follow up to staff? Uh, Councilmember Willie, your hand is raised and I don't see further hands raised, although now I see Councilmember Wei. So let's go with Councilmember Willie first and then we'll follow with Councilmember Wei.
Yeah. Director Morley, my question would be, you know, in line with what our resident was asking. Maybe you can break down the 700,000. Re-plastering both pools, what's the dollar value of that? Um, the ADA upgrade, what would you estimate the dollar value of that? So then we kind of understand that 700,000, if that truly is, uh, uh, the right number for, uh, draining the pool, re-plastering it, refilling, and two pools rather than one. And whatever the ADA upgrade, then I would say that that would be, um, in line. If it's, um, significantly different than that, then perhaps you can tell us, um, more detail.
So the, the estimate that we have, the engineer's estimate, uh, is targeting a 20% ADA element for the project. The rest of it would be the pool, uh, the actual, um, the actual bids will, will tell us exactly where we're at when we land on those. But that's the target for the, uh, for the entire project. So 20% of, of the, of the target of the project cost would be ADA improvements.
So the rest then is all dedicated to the
Capital maintenance for the pool.
Re-plastering.
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Let's go to Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. This is a question for Assistant, uh, City Manager and Director, uh, Matt Morley. So, um, in order for the pool to be functioning in the summer, upcoming summer, this is a necessary capital maintenance program. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, it's always possible that we could nurse it along for another summer. Uh, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put the absolute on it, but we have already put a Band-Aid on this one to do some patching to the plaster. The plaster is rough, so it's not as pleasant when it's rough, uh, and aged for, for the users. Uh, so we, we're, we're at the point where it needs to be done. It's going to be done this year or next year if we want to continue using the, the pools. So we're, we're pushing, pushing hard to get it done so that the users have a good experience.
Thank you, Matt. So another question is, um, the resident said all of a sudden the slide was gone. But I remember, uh, there were a couple of reports on this, that the slide was, um, not safe. Um, it, it, does my, is my memory serving me correct?
You, you are correct. The, the slide had reached the end of its, of its serviceable life. There's this funny, um, way of handling slides and pools by the state and that they're considered an amusement park ride, uh, which is, is a bit strange, but it's the, it's what we, what we deal with. Uh, so it has a very high level of safety and maintenance requirements. So that slide was, that was slide's life had ended. So our replacement, um, suggestion had been the splash pad. Obviously that wasn't a preferred alternative. So we can always do something further in, in the future. I will say that the pool where the slide is, is still, is, is a functional pool and it's still great for recreational play from a pool perspective. So, uh, the, the pool facility is still very functional and useful.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I have comments later. Thank you, Mayor Paul.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. Next we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay. So I was just looking up contingency amounts and the 20% does seem a little bit high. And I was reading that, um, San Jose limits their, um, contingencies uh, for public works, projects to 10 to 15% of the total contract amount, depending on the, the type of the project. Um, so I'm wondering if we have any policy on contingency amounts? Um, and is that something that we should perhaps be referring to, um, to Moss Adams as we go through the, our purchasing and contracts, um, portion of our policy review?
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we, we don't have a, a policy or a set, uh, contingency amount. I'm not aware of, of a set, uh, amount. I know there's not one in the public contract code, which is largely our governing document. Uh, we use between 10 and 20%. We try and use a 10% contingency on normal projects where we have a more complex or project where there's a potential for unforeseen circumstances. Like this one where we're taking plaster off of a wall and we may see something underneath that needs to be fixed. We tend to increase, uh, recommend an increased contingency. Um, of course, it's always the council's discretion to reduce that, but the, that, that would potent, lead to a potential where we have to stop a project and come back to council in order to, to complete it. So. Um, that's the reason, the reason why we do it and the reason why we have a, a flexible contingency between 10 and 20%.
Councilmember Moore.
Um, so we could potentially, uh, limit the contingency to 15% in this contract. And when we make a motion, include that, that would be an option. And then what would happen is it would, it would come back to us as I understand, um, if we need to raise that.
Any more money? Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Vic, Vice Mayor Chow, you're next.
Thank you. So I think the same question keeps being asked for every contract. And, uh, in this, uh, agenda packet, we see only the staff report. But I see that the, the proposal, uh, was published on November 9th. So the, the call for proposal or call for bid could have been included in the agenda pack, packet with more detail. And I remember in the past that the council has asked, uh, for the, the list of, uh, bids to be included and the staff report used, did include those and then tell the council which one was selected and the due date of the bid was November 29th. So I wonder how come this was not followed and why do we authorize the city manager to award a contract rather than maybe come back in the next meeting? So we have the bid and the list of proposals and then, um, inform the council and the public which one was chose and, uh, how they were choose, chosen. I think this is the same question that keeps being asked by the council and the public.
Okay. Uh, well, let me turn this over back to Director Morley. And so did you want to speak to the question from Vice Mayor Chow?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as we called out in the, uh, in the staff report, we did identify that this project is on a tight timeline and we're trying to push it as quickly as we can so that we can open in, uh, in time for the swim season. With that, uh, we have bids, we extended the bid date be, be, because of some amendments, addendums to the bid, uh, packet that we made along the way. So the bids are due this week. We'll do the analysis this week and be able to make a determination on, uh, who to award to. Because of the tight timeframe, we didn't want to wait all the way until, um, the end of January for an award. Uh, given, given, uh, the turnover and council and the focus in the meeting. So that's the reason for the authorization for the city manager, manager to award. Uh, so this is a little bit atypical in that way. Um, we would obviously bring back a, a summary of what the bid, uh, responses were. And we have no discretion, so it would go to the lowest responsive, responsive bidder, uh, for award.
Thank you for the update later, but I, I'm just trying to understand. So this project was from the 2020, 21 CIP. So it's been a, a year. So why are we under such tight timeline? Just trying to understand, maybe there were something unexpected delay. Yeah, I hate it when the council were asked to make decision just because there is a tight timeline.
Understood. Um, so the, the reason for the tight timeline is the design work that was needed to make this happen. And, uh, the, the process in getting the design complete took us, uh, up to this time of year. So that from a, from a bid process and getting construction scheduled, uh, that's where we landed. Um, our recommendation is to move it forward, uh, on a quick timeline so that it, that we can get to construction by this coming summer. Um, I could see where if the council didn't want to do that, that you could ask us to come back with the bids at, at a later time. Uh, and we can certainly, uh, pursue that as well. We're trying to streamline the process and make it, um, sort of work at the, at the speed of business in terms of getting things done. Um, so it's, it's really the option to council. We put it, lined it out in the staff report fairly clearly so that you could make that decision.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, Director, uh, Acting Assistant City Manager Morley. And so we will go ahead and bring this back. Um, I consider that the round of questions. And so if we have commentary, do you have follow-up questions, Councilmember Moore? There's a affirmative nod and Councilmember Wei, you had mentioned that you had comments. And so let me go and finish off questions, uh, with Councilmember Moore before I entertain a motion for further discussion. Councilmember Moore.
Okay. I, I want to make sure I understand, um, so in our agenda item 12, uh, item two, authorize the Director of Public Works to allow a construction contingency budget of, here it's 20% of the construction contract amount to address unforeseen conditions discovered during construction. And that is not the same as a change order. Um, so could you just to, for our edification, uh, explain what the difference is between a change order and what unforeseen conditions mean? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The, the unforeseen conditions would actually lead to a change order. So it, it's the condition that leads to the additional cost. Uh, in a swimming pool, there's things under, uh, underneath the plaster, for example, lighting, drainage, um, structural support, rebar, things like that. So if we were to see a condition underneath, uh, the plaster that we hadn't anticipated, uh, we would take a look at that. The contractor would, uh, provide us, uh, proposed cost for, uh, for addressing that issue. That would be the change and we would issue a change order if we were in agreement with it.
Okay. And so I went looking that up as well and I'm seeing down to 10% for, for change orders before going to another city's council is, is their, um, municipal code. Um, so there, there, I, I am seeing some policies around that that are being codified. So I am kind of interested in that topic now. Um, and wondering what, what number is actually, um, uh, most prudent for us to, to have in this, um, agreement. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, really good questions. So, uh, let me go to my fellow council members to see if there is, um, a motion that we'd like to put on the table for item number 12. Uh, before we entertain further discussion, I see a hand raised from Councilmember Wei. And Councilmember Moore, your hand is still up as well. Let's go to Councilmember Wei first.
I'd like to make a motion, um, as proposed by staff.
Okay. Councilmember Wei moves the recommended action. Is there a second for the recommended action? Councilmember Moore's hand is no longer up. I'll go to anyone on council. Uh, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the table. And so Councilmember Moore, your hand is up and Councilmember Wei, your hand is also up. So let's go to Councilmember Moore first for comments, followed by Councilmember Wei.
Okay. Um, so I would like a substitute motion, um, that we, uh, we move the recommended action, item one, but for item two, we lower the contingency budget to be more in line with, uh, San Jose at this point. So that would be 15% of the construction content, contract amount to address unforeseen conditions discovered during construction.
Councilmember Moore moves a substitute motion. Is there a second for this substitute motion? I don't see a hand raised at this time. Um, and I now see Vice Mayor Chow with a hand raised. Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to second the substitute motion?
Yeah, I'll second that. And, uh, could I add, um, more amendment?
You are free to introduce a friendly amendment to the substitute motion that is now on the table, Vice Mayor Chow.
The future agenda item on contract, uh, should include the, the bid documents, um, if it's, um, call for proposal or RFP, RFU. And those documents should be included in the agenda packet. Thank you.
Okay. Um, let me see if I understand your friendly amendment correctly, Vice Mayor Chow. So you're asking for instruction to staff, is that correct? For future?
Yeah. Direction, include direction for future, uh, agenda to include more complete background information for this kind of capital project.
Okay. Um, let me refer this to staff before I ask for a second. I'd like to work with you on this, but I'm not sure that we're proper. you on this, but I'm not sure that we're properly noticed for, for this type of instruction. So what would you, what would you suggest Attorney Jensen with regard to? It, it connects to this, right? In terms of the underlying substance and request. But how, how would, well, assuming that it is properly noticed, I guess that's fine. But if it's not, how should we, you know, advise to tweak it to, you know, see the light of day, so to speak, in the future?
Well, so it could be requested as a future agenda item. That sort of general policy is not noticed for discussion. I think we would have to look at it carefully and see if it was appropriate topic for council direction because it does potentially intrude into the city manager's ability to prepare staff reports and manage staff. But, but I'm not prepared to opine on that at this time.
Okay, fair enough. Kind of similar to a policy for contingencies, right? I mean, that could go through audit, but it should be noticed as such, right?
I, I would see a policy for contingencies being potentially part of a purchasing policy which would come to council.
Right, right. Okay, fair enough. Well, let's go to Vice Mayor Chow again. So Vice Mayor Chow.
Just want to clarify. All I'm asking is, for example, the, the bid request that was posted on November 9th to be included. So nothing more than, it's just public information. So it's for easy access.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
It's city manager's discretion. She can implement it without council direction or we could have a council direction to request that. I understand. But it will have to be agendized.
I, I, I'm not comfortable putting it forward as a friendly amendment, asking for the original movement, whether they would be willing to, at this time. So I, I think I would refer you to a separate conversation with the city attorney to see what would be the appropriate way to move that forward. But I think your comment is duly noted and it is now on our meeting record. So anything else, Vice Mayor Chow?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so we have the substitute motion that is on the table. And so that will be voted upon first. I don't see, actually, I do see a hand raised. Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. This is a question for, for Director Matt. So if we change the contingency of 15% to 20%, do you perceive a major issue with timing? Because Blackberry Farm is a major, major facility for our residents, especially in the summer. So I would hate to delay a project because you have to come back with a extra two, 1-2% of money and delay the project further. We do have to open the Blackberry Farm for the summer. It's one of our treasured facility in our city. Our whole residents benefit from it. So this is for Director Matt. Does it, if 20%, you feel comfortable, I would trust staff judgment on this? Because you did explain that because of the complexity of the project, it, when you open the plastic, something could need more repairment. If it has to come to council, I can see a month's delay or two on, on this thing. And so timing is very important for our residents.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. I, I think your question is fairly straightforward and clear. So Director Morley, what are your thoughts on that?
Thank you, Councilmember. We do, we do look seriously at the, at the contingency amount that we ask for and, and we're strategic about it. So when we ask for 20%, we think that that's the right amount and our recommendation would remain 20%. That said, if, if the council's more comfortable with 15%, I think you've explained what the potential risks are. But we'll do obviously our best to make it all happen and deliver the project. Hopefully we'll have zero need for the money and it will be all a moot point.
Thanks very much. Let's go to Councilmember Willie with a hand raised.
Yeah. So I'm definitely glad that this was polled. It's given us some real good discussion. Pertaining to the, the current sticking point on the contingency, I think the way I would tend to, to look at it, that kind of helps me decide where to be. For maintenance-type projects, how much contingency is needed? Well, painting, probably very little. Roofing, probably not too much either. Repaving, probably not too much. But replastering a swimming pool, I would just tend to be inclined, it's not something that we do very often. You, as, as our Director of Public Works said, you know, you really don't know what's underneath that plaster. And if you did pull it off and find the, the mortar underneath with the rebar, you know, kind of coming apart, you'd really want the contractor to quickly respond and get those, those unforeseen items taken care of to keep the schedule. Whereas, you know, what if, what if, you know, those things were found and the opening of the pool was delayed? I, I agree with Councilman Wei that, wow, that, I think that really would, would be tough for us to say, well, we didn't, didn't realize it. So at this point, I, I would be inclined that in the future, if Public Works was to say, hey, we have a category A, B, and C for contingency and this is kind of a C. And so that's why it gets the, the 20%. So I think with that being said, I, I think we really should err on the side of making sure whatever happens gets taken care of without an anticipated delay in coming back. I really believe Director Morley would be coming back to us as quick as possible, but still, the potential delay for the pool getting open on time would, would be a stickler. So, so I tend to, to stay with the recommended action at this time. But in the future, knowing A, B, and C would make us easy, make it easier for us to get over the amount of contingency. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. I, I do see another hand raised, actually two, one from Vice Mayor Chow, one from Councilmember Moore. So let me, maybe my zoom function will give me a better idea of the order of this. So it looks like Vice Mayor Chow and then Councilmember Moore. And I apologize if that wasn't quite the right order. And kind of listening to this, let me make a quick comment. You know, I think the question with regarding, with regard to timing is that if there is a need for additional funds beyond that 15% contingency, will you need to wait until another council meeting? And then it takes a while to agendize it. So, so what kind of goes through my mind is perhaps we could empower a subcommittee that could move quickly. And it would need to be, you know, in my mind, the two people or, or two of the people that are either continuing on or presumptively continuing on. And, and that could meet relatively quickly to, you know, allow for the extra 5%. We, we could bake that into the motion. But let's hear from our colleagues here. Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah. So I'm sharing, I'm trying to find the bid document, but I found this one that interestingly is from November 14, 2019. It was for Blackberry Farms' light and recreation pool remodel then. And it's for 3,000-foot resurfacing and include the slide pool also and deck improvement. The estimated cost was $242,000. I guess this one doesn't include a lot of these ADA improvement and restrooms and those. Could I get some more information on, did we not get a bid for this one? Was this, I suppose was on the CIP in 1920? I don't remember now. So do I have some more information about the history?
Let me, let me see if this can be briefly disposed of. And, and I should say addressed, that was perhaps not the best choice of words. But, you know, if you have a question based upon past material, I, I think the time to have asked it would have been during the questions or, or prior to the item. But, but let's see if Director Morley can, can speak to this.
Yeah, this has been a challenging project over the years. So in, in the original project, the, the estimate was in that $500,000 range. The project was scoped and designed and put out to bid. And the, the cost came in higher than anticipated. And so the, all bids were rejected at that point by the council. And that's what you see there with that, that era of bid document. Since then, we've gone back out. We've actually included the ADA improvements that weren't required originally, that weren't identified originally, would have been required, but weren't identified. So there's additional scope in this one and additional project that costs escalation due to the amount of time that it's taken to get it back out. So that's why the change in costs. So that brings us to where we are today.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I'll go to, go back to Vice Mayor Chow. Your, your hand is still raised. Did you still want to speak to this? And again, we're, I remind you, we have a substitute motion on the table that you seconded.
Okay. And so I'll go to Councilmember Moore.
Councilmember Moore.
Okay. So the, the bids came back in around the $400,000 range, if I read that correctly out of the report. So the, the Blackberry Farm pools were originally put in for bid, I should say, put out for bid in 2019. And one bid was received at $469,000. And on December 3rd, 2019, council rejected the bid as it exceeded the available budget, which was at that time $200,000. And then council authorized $750,000. And that was to include the ADA improvements, right? So I, you know, I, I really appreciate the mayor's suggestion to, to have a subcommittee. And I, I really don't want to get into the, the habit of having a 20% contingency amount on, on this contract. And I, I think it's, it's setting, setting a precedent I don't want to see. And I'm not seeing consistency among the other cities. So when I, when I'm looking, looking up what contingency amounts other cities are having, I'm seeing 10 to 15% or 10%. And we're asking for 20%, which to me means there's, there's, there's something wrong with the, the amounts being suggested for a particular project in the beginning. And that, that there's, there's an issue there, that we should not be seeing this, this large of a unforeseen condition potential. And I would assume that since previously, the number was $469,000 to, to do that work, that these are professionals who have already worked in to their bid, that they have some expectation and expertise to deal with any issues that they, that they might run into with the pool. Because it's really not rocket science. It's pool replastering and they are professionals. So like I said, I, I don't agree with going up to this 20%. If you want to set a, a subcommittee to, to be more nimble, to, to bring it to council, I, I think that that would be good. But I do think, kind of like with regards to looking at the, the seismic design for the city council without some committee there, that having some members of the council who are being kept informed of what issues arise and have a discussion about that and are able to, you know, do a deeper dive into, into that, I think that would be good. And as opposed to just accepting that a contractor is saying he needs 20% and, oh, look at that rebar. And, and if I were a contractor, I would be watching this meeting and I, I know, I know what, I know what's going on. So I would, so I, I'm very reluctant to go to such a high percentage.
Okay. Well, before I call on Councilmember Wei, I'm going to go ahead and check in as to the ability to create a friendly amendment to your substitute motion, to that effect of having a subcommittee formed. And I would propose that Councilmember Wei and Councilmember Moore be on the subcommittee. And this really deals, and I'm getting a look from the city attorney, are you concerned about where I'm going here or?
Well, yeah, I don't think the subcommittee would have authority to, to.
To empower that extra 5%.
To approve a contract. That would have to be, if it exceeds the city manager's authority, that would need to be approved by the full council. So, you know, so.
But this is only 5% of the 700-some-thousand, right? So that would be within the city manager's authority, which is what, 50,000?
Well, so when there's a contract amendment that, that where, that makes the, that causes the total amount of the contract, any contract amendment where the total amount of the contract exceeds the city manager's approval authority, that needs to be approved by council.
Well, what if the approval is granted, but the release of those funds needs to be authorized by the subcommittee whose authority is delegated to it by the council here?
So I, I think there would be a concern about the council acting through less than a majority of its members, which is, is not consistent with the municipal code.
Well, I, I'm not sure that that wouldn't accommodate the, the legal requirement, but I'll, I'll go ahead and accede to that and withdraw my attempt to make the substitute motion. Councilmember Wei had a hand raised first. So I'll go to Councilmember Wei before we go to Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Wei.
I, I like to re, remind our council members that we, we have staff that has expertise. And when, if something's plastic goes out, something else is wrong, it's not up to the contractor to use the 20%. It's up our staff to evaluate the situation, to make project complete. So I don't see, I think I listened clear and loudly what Director Morley said. This, this 20% is because the pool project is different from other projects. I would want us, our council members to trust our staff. They're not going to give 20% to the contractor for nothing. We have staff that's going to watch the project. We want to be able to open the Blackberry Farm for our residents by the summer. And I really think we need to listen to the staff's recommendations, their reasoning, their logical, very good reasoning, and trust what they do is going to be beneficial to our residents. They're not going to pay the contractor just for nothing, for 20%. And this budget is a budget. They're still going to look at bits. They're going to look the lowest bits. What would two council members decide on 5%? I, I really think the staff's recommendations are reasonable, rational, and we should trust their, their decision. And they will come back and report to us how the money is spent. I don't think a contractor can say, oh, there's 20%. So I'm going to make sure that I use that 20%. We have staff there to really overlook the project. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. I'm going to go ahead and move this to Councilmember Willie, then Councilmember Moore. And just, you know, to, to interject my position on this, I'll, I'll support the substitute motion. I'm fine with the terms of it as, as stated. But Councilmember Willie, let's go to you and then Councilmember Moore.
Yeah. Just trying to salvage the mayor's thought that he had. And if we were to approve the 20%, but the subcommittee simply were to decide whether or not it should come back to the city council, should it go over the 15? So that they're not approving contractual amounts.
Councilmember, well, I, I just, I'm sorry, just to cut you off there. The purpose of the subcommittee, as far as I formulated the, or started to formulate the friendly amendment, was to save time. And so if you have to stop by the subcommittee first to see whether it should go back to council, then you're adding another step, right? So that, that actually doesn't save time. That adds time. So, I mean, if that helps with your comment.
Well, it would only be that if it was some, something really big that was foreseen, like maybe the life of the pool is in jeopardy or something, do we want to spend 700,000? The subcommittee would simply say, hey, before you go off and do that, bring it to the city council for a final decision.
I just, I wouldn't support that as, just to.
Okay.
As a substitute.
That's fine. Just trying to help.
Yeah. And I will say, it's not that, you know, I, I think, I, I actually, I very much trust staff to make sure that they're acting, you know, fiscally responsible and in good faith to, you know, not, not try to run it up or, you know, teach counsel an object lesson. And there's no need to, at least not on my own part, because I'm out of here in three days, right? So there's no, there's, there's no point in doing that. But, you know, in any event, I mean, I, personally, I'm compelled by what I've heard from Councilmember Moore on the points with regard to the contingencies. And, you know, I, I think that it's a, it's a pretty healthy contract to begin with. And, you know, I think that echoing Councilmember Wei's points, I, I also very much trust our staff, especially, you know, these days, we've, we've done a lot of great things to our, our city employee pool. And I, I don't, I just don't think that we have a situation where we may end up coming back in six months because perhaps, you know, there, there, there is a sentiment. because perhaps, you know, there is a sentiment of encouragement to do something like that. I just, I think we have real competent professionals here. And so my hope is that, you know, within a reasonable contingency, this project can be done well. So Councilmember Moore, you're next. Councilmember Willie, you still have your hand raised in Zoom and sign anymore, so Councilmember Moore.
I just want to remind us that for the Memorial Park Pond repurposing, when they did their excavation, they found another layer of concrete. And I believe that did come back to us to have an increase. And they were completed all of that work before the Veterans Day celebration that we had there. And they're moving the fences now.
Great, well, thank you for the comment. Since we're not on Memorial Park Ponds, I have a burning follow up to that question or in comment, but I will not ask it. So I'll take that offline. So I don't see any further hands raised. But for Councilmember Wei, Councilmember Wei, did you want to make a comment at this time?
Just one very brief comment. For five percent difference, I really don't see why we don't accept the staff's recommendations. They're not going to spend the twenty percent. Or if they could, right, save it to ten percent. And I, the Pond Memorial Park is different from Blackberry Farm. Blackberry Farm is one of our summer treasured facility. I really do not want to jeopardize the opening of Blackberry Farm for summer twenty twenty-three over a five percent contingency. These are percentage that the staff is not going to waste. It's just a precaution in case they need to make sure the project goes through, that our kids are enjoying Blackberry Farm in twenty twenty-three in the summer. So I would not want to nitpick and make it by fifteen percent instead of twenty percent. I listened loud and clearly that Director Morley's explanation, why it's twenty percent. The staff carefully calculated just in case. They really want Blackberry Farm to open in time in summer twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. And I'm going to go ahead and close it out with no further comments. We have a substitute motion on the floor. Madam City Clerk, could you take a vote on that substitute motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Nay.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with Wei voting no.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And Madam City Clerk, as well as all my other colleagues on council and staff. So let's go ahead and take a five minute break here. I have it at nine seventeen. Let's go ahead and start back up at nine twenty-three. We have a couple of items remaining on our agenda. Those are items thirteen, which is a study session, and item fourteen, which is a public hearing. And we'll start off with item number thirteen when we get back. Okay, so we've gone through consent and we'll return back in five minutes. We'll see you then. Thank you.